Alright, recording ready?
Mm-hmm.
Are you guys ready? Guy, are you ready? Or do you need a break?
I'm ready.
Okay.
Just gotta find a pen here to make it.
Okay.
Boy, these lights are bright.
Yeah, they are. You're good, you're ready? Okay. Alright! Thank you everyone for being here. My name's Terry McCabe and I'm on the Provo School Board. And I want to thank the PTA and Pleasant Grove High School for hosting this event. Um, is it?
It's on.
Okay. Um, we want to thank the candidates for being willing to create a new school district and let's get to know them. Each candidate will have two minutes to introduce themselves, two minutes to answer the questions, and two minutes to summarize. And we have Madeline as our timer. Um, due to time limits, we may not be able to address every question, but candidates will be available at their booth afterwards so you can ask them. And Lori got the number one, so she's going first and Guy gets second. So... Okay?
Ready? My name is Lori Bolak and I have been an educator for, this is my 29th year. And I started with teaching resource reading and English and now I'm currently the librarian at Pleasant Grove Junior High. I am running because I am kind of close to retirement and I just don't think I'm quite ready to go away. So I would like to use what I know and how I feel about our kids and our teachers and my passion for education to help create our new school district.
I'm Guy Fugel. A lifelong resident of Pleasant Grove and, uh, um, I guess I'm a little different than Lori because I'm way past retirement and somewhere I got lost and didn't take that road. So anyway, my dad told me years and years ago that, he says, "You know, uh, retirement's not in your vocabulary." So anyway, so, and he was kind of right. And, uh, so anyway, I, I have two wonderful daughters and eight wonderful grandchildren. And, uh, uh, some of them have lived in Pleasant Grove, some of them attended Pleasant Grove High School and some have been, I hate to say this, but been Cape men. So anyway, but I support them and I went along with them. But anyway, uh, one of my, uh, I'm just finishing up my eighth year as mayor of Pleasant Grove and, uh, we've been involved with the other cities, Linden Orim and Vineyard and Interlocal. And, uh, you know, the more I looked at it, I thought, "You know, maybe I gotta put my hat in the ring on this to just, uh, uh, maybe I have something to offer here and know what's going on." So, um, uh, my past experience of Alpine was 19 years and it was a, uh, a great run and I learned a lot. So I think I have, uh, some perspective and I can help build this new school, uh, district with the help of the other board members. Thank you.
Let's hold the rest of the pauses until the summaries. Thank you. Okay, Lori, first question. What have you done this year only to prepare to be on the new school board?
I have, I have learned more in the last four months about Alpine School District than I think I ever knew before. And about people in Pleasant Grove and so many different things. I have just studied and studied and studied to answer a lot of questions. I've talked to a lot of people and I have learned that this is not what I was expecting, but it's made me very excited to, to work with other people to, to create this new school district.
Okay, I've learned, the biggest thing I've learned is I, I hate, being out there and, uh, having to put signs up and, and campaign. That's the biggest thing about, that I've learned that I forgot how bad that really is. So it's not a fun things, but, and my hat goes off to anybody and especially to Lori for putting her name in because it's, 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 it's not a pleasant experience. But, but here we are and, and I've, uh, you know, it's given me the opportunity to kind of get updated on really what's going on in Alpine and, uh, and the things we're facing and what the legislature did to us and what is in this situation we're in. So, thank you.
Okay.
It was not, it's not record last question?
Oh, yes. Okay. Agenda item number one for the new school board will be to vote on who will be the board president and vice president. What should agenda items number two and three be?
Well, that's an interesting, uh, dynamics that happens with the board. We just have to hopefully get to know each other a little bit and see who has the seven members who they want us to, who wants to, uh, they want to lead out and direct the board in, uh, what they do because that's kind of is the, uh, it's kind of the chief spokesman for the board, the, the board president is. And, uh, there's a lot of work involved in that. I did it, uh, for, uh, on Alpine and, uh, so it's, you're more involved and you more have a day-to-day experience usually with the superintendent. So it's, it's a good process and we'll look forward to seeing that go forward.
Do you want me to read it again?
I think, I think I remember it. I think the agenda item number two would be to start discussing who our superintendent is going to be and what options. I don't even know what the protocol is for all that, but, um, we need to be talking about that right from the beginning. And we also need to be talking about, I, I would say number three is like our facilities. What, what do we have? What do we have to work with? How are we going to make the most of what we have?
Okay, Lori. What do you believe makes an effective school board team? And how should individual board members contribute to that success?
I think a, for a school board to be effective, they need to be able to communicate with each other. They need to be able to disagree, um, in a way that's not fatal. And be able to discuss things openly and, and make those decisions. I think the minute you start having big rifts in your school board, you're in big trouble.
Well, you know, uh, the dynamics of a school board, all depends on who gets elected and, uh, and it's, it's going to be interesting come November, first week in November, what that's going to look like and start, uh, you know, not kind of look at the other candidates and the other districts and, uh, and hey, I have my favorites, uh, who I'd like to work with and, uh, who I think could be team players and could work together. That's what it is, is working as a team. You don't always agree with, uh, each other, but at the end of the day, you come to consensus and move forward and, uh, and do best what's best for the district and, uh, and, and we've got a tough job ahead of us because there's a lot of things we need to do and I think a lot of that will be, uh, is being taken care of right now with Alpine still at the head of it. And, uh, I've, Alpine has got a great administration right now and I think we're all, will look after us and we'll get our share and, uh, we'll be able to, uh, feel good about where we're at on the, on the three-way split.
Okay, Guy. What lessons should the new school board take from the decision not to enter an interlocal agreement?
What was that first again?
What lessons should the new school board take from the decision not to enter an interlocal agreement?
Well, I, you know, I, as we start out, you know, there's, uh, there's a lot of good lessons there, but, uh, you know, we're, we're still going to be distant part of Alpine until the board gets going and we decide where we can make better improvements. All depends on, it goes back, really the whole key to it and, uh, and brought up that, uh, who's our superintendent? That's the biggest, uh, thing right there we have facing us as a board is who we get to sit in that chair superintendent and who the business administrator is. The only two people that the board has any vote on, we approve other administrators and whatever, but we hire the superintendent and, uh, and, uh, we just need to find the best and we find the best and the other administrators will, will follow and the teachers will want to be, uh, uh, in the Tempanogas School District. They'll want to follow that superintendent if we get the right person in the seat. And I think we can.
I think the one thing that we can learn is, I know that at my school and, and other teachers that I talked to, when, when we first found out that we were going to split, we was, people were scared. We just had no idea what that meant for us and what that meant for, what it was even going to look like for this new school district. But I really think that, um, we have the capacity to, to shine and, and like, you know, with a good superintendent, we've got, we already have great teachers. Uh, we need to keep those teachers, but I think that we can learn that we can work together and we're going to be okay in the end.
Lori, as a new board, you decide to create a transition plan. What specific components should be included to ensure a smooth cooperative separation from Alpine School District and avoid potential conflicts or mediation such as those that occurred between Jordan and Canyon School District?
I think that we need to, there's, there's so many big decisions that need to be made. But I think if we go into it being very, um, open, um, being very, I can't think of the word. It's not translucent, but, you know, you know the word I'm thinking. Transparent, there you go. And letting people know, I think that to make that smooth transition, we need to, I mean, there's going to be some hard decisions for a lot of people and, and there's going to be some hard things. But I think that to make that smooth, I think the best thing is to, if we're going to change boundaries, if we're going to close schools, we need to do that and start new and then stay that way. That's for the students mainly. Um, make sure that they feel secure, that we're not going to be throwing them here and there, that we're, we're starting this new district and, and that's where it is for the teachers and for the students, that, that they can feel secure where they are when we begin.
You know, you, uh, the Jordan Canyon split was really just gone right terrible. And, uh, they were fighting between each other and not giving in and, uh, taxes increased, uh, really greatly and, uh, I think there was a lot of lessons learned there and I think we can, and, and where I see it heading and my hope would be that, uh, hey, this will be a pleasant experience on splitting up and, and we'll learn the lessons that Canyon's and what they didn't do right and, uh, Jordan and be more, I don't know, loving with each other and, uh, appreciative. And, and I think with our Alpine superintendent right now, I think Superintendent Smith will, uh, will really make it fair, a three-way split. And I think that's a big thing for all of us and that we can, uh, feel good about. And, and I hope that on our end, we can minimize any future tax increases that will happen.
Okay, Guy. What process would you recommend the new school board use to select a name for the new school district?
The name?
Yeah.
Well, I guess we, um, I guess we could, uh, we ought to float it out there and get some different, you know, I mean, Tempanogas was tagged because we didn't like the South. That, that just didn't work well, so. And, uh, and I've, I've seen the postings on Facebook and stuff says, "Well, you know, you know, uh, Tempanogas comes up as a spell check when you, uh, write it out and, 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 and it's a hard word to dispel." And, and I think we, we ought to be open and then I think that's one of the first things the, the board will have to decide is how we want to proceed with that, if we want to open it up. I don't see dragging it out very long in a long process, but maybe asking for some more names and, and float those out there and see if there's something better than Tempanogas. I know Geneva's been floating out there and, uh, so, uh, but it is critical. We get a right name and one that everybody is happy with, but I don't think we have the time to, to select several names and then put it out there, uh, for the public to, uh, have a vote on. So, but, uh, so I think it's going to lay with the, uh, the district is what I would assume it was with input from the public. Maybe having a couple of public, uh, information meetings and getting the feedback.
Um, I put the question out on my social media asking, just what are your ideas? Because I've seen some, um, some of the Orem people, people were chiming in what they thought and...
Was one of those Orem? Orem School District?
No, but ever since I did that, my mother-in-law texts me like three times every day with her suggestions. But, um, I think it would be, yeah, I don't think it should be a long drawn-out thing. I don't think that it needs to be, that everyone needs to agree. They're not going to agree. I think we should try to find something that's meaningful to every city that is, is in our district. And something that, and, and just as a teacher, Tempanogas is brutal. The many, as many times have I seen Alpine spelling correctly, I really worry about Tempanogas. But, but I like Tempanogas, but, yeah. I think, I think it would be fun just to get the input. I think it'd be fun to get the kids' input and see what they have to say. But in the end, it's going to be the board's decision, what they think.
Lori, have you started writing interview questions for the superintendent and business administrator applicants? Name one question you would like to ask each applicant.
I would want to ask, what is your goal for the students of our school district? What do you see for them in the future? That would be my question.
I think mine would be, uh, how can you, uh, work with the superintendent? And how can you, uh, make sure you're transparent with every dollar we have in the district? And, uh, and make sure the public's aware of everything we're doing financially? And I think that's been one of my first questions, too.
Guy, how should the new school board ensure the new superintendent and business administrator have flexibility to organize the new school district while still providing appropriate oversight?
Well, you know, NACOS, you know, the superintendent and the business administrator, they're the ones that run the district. We just, uh, we need to stay out of the way. We just, they'll bring things to us and we'll either approve them or we'll say, "Well, we don't like that idea." And so it's going the other way. But we need to just, uh, just watch over them and hire the best and let them do their job. And that's how it works. The board doesn't run the district. It's, uh, we're just a board that oversees and, and it's the, the public's input in what we do and to make sure we're, we're doing things correctly and that we, we hold our superintendent and our business administrator accountable.
Yeah. That's exactly what I was thinking. We, that's why we hire the people that we do is so that they can do their jobs and we have enough to do without doing theirs as well. So, I agree.
Lori, should the new school board explore changes to the district's payday schedule with the new business administrator? And what process would you recommend to evaluate the impact of such a change?
Can you read that one more time?
Yes. Should the new school board explore changes to the district's payday schedule with the new business administrator? And what process would you recommend to evaluate the impact of such a change?
I'm sorry, did you say payday schedule?
Yes. Currently, as an employee, you get paid at the end of the month.
Right. Oh, I see. Okay. I like when I get paid. I guess, I don't know. I mean, if, if we, if that was something that was a concern, if that was something that we needed to look at, we definitely could do that. That's just, that's just, wow, you just like blew my mind right there. You said payday and I'm like, "Yeah." This week. I think the way we do it, I've, I've worked both ways where I've been paid twice a month. I've worked where I've paid, paid once a month. I've worked where I've been paid once for the entire summer months. And I think the way that Alpine does it is very fair and it works out very well for teachers, so.
Well, that's, it's kind of a strange question.
It is a weird question. I'm like...
Well, you know, and hey, I'm, uh, I'm a business person. Some, some of you have to do weekly payroll. All depends on what project you're on and, uh, but not the monthly. And that was something that I really, uh, learned real well. But that's what education's all about and that's the norm in the education circles is way Alpine pays and the other districts do the same thing. So I think that's where we're at. But we're always, you can always look at it and say, "Should we do something different?" But it takes a lot of work to run a payroll and it's time-consuming, so, anyway.
Okay, Guy. As a board member, how would you approach setting up policies for the new district? Why would you favor adopting Alpine policies, revising them, or starting fresh, and why?
Well, when you start out, you've got to have a policy. And we don't have the time to write a whole new policy. So what we'll do is we'll just take and it'll be the same for the other two districts. And, uh, they'll take Alpine's and the policy is volumes deep. I mean, if you had it on paper, it'd be stacked this high. And, uh, we'll just put, uh, Tempanogas as, if that's our name, on those policies and that will become our policy to start out. And that's the responsibility of the administrators, the superintendent and the business administrator, say, "You know, here's some things we want you to really look at that we maybe need to change right out the gate, our policies that Alpine probably didn't do, could have been done better on." And that's why the board's there. And maybe we'll have some input from some other people. Uh, we'll hit up the board and say, you know, "What can, what about this policy? You need to do this and do this little difference." And, and, uh, we'll meet as a board with our superintendent and throw those ideas around and then start working on that and changing it to be ours. It'll be our own unique one, but as, as we start out, it'll be Alpine's and it's the only way we can do it. Thank you.
I think that one's...
That's all.
I think, yeah, there's no possible way that we're going to be able to rewrite the book. Um, I think because we live in the same area, our constituents have the same value systems, we're going to be able to keep most of those the same. And we can look at ones that may be different for our situation. And we can make those changes as we need to, but that, that is a huge undertaking and, and I don't think we should go in thinking we're going to change, that we're going to write the book.
Okay. Lori, recently ASD posted a graphic about the feeder school, uh, about the feeder school patterns. Among the many issues facing the new district, what priority should feeder school patterns be for the new school board and superintendent? How would you approach gathering information and input to determine the best feeder school patterns?
I think we have a lot of the information we need with the, with numbers. Um, we need to make those decisions on whether we are going to advance our ninth graders into the high schools or we're going to bring our sixth graders up. I think, um, we need to make sure that our schools, there, there is such thing as having too few students in a school that really affects, with your elementary school, it affects the number of classes that you can have in each grade. It affects a lot of things. It affects, it, it makes a difference on the number of classes you can offer in your junior high and high school. So I think we need to look at those numbers and we need to look at boundaries, if we've got to change some boundaries. I personally, I agree with the, the flow. I think it would be great to go from elementary to junior high to high school. And I think that if we're going to make those changes, we need to do right from the beginning, um, if that's possible.
You know, I, I agree with Lori and, you know, I saw that graphic and I, and being on the outside, not knowing why they haven't, why not everybody's feeding into that, I, I don't know. And there must be a reason why it's that way, but I think it needs to be looked at. I, I really believe in, uh, have a, having feeder schools go to, and, uh, from the elementary to the junior highs of the high schools. But you can't, it's, it's a different, it's easier in Pleasant Grove than it is. Orem has its own challenges out there. So that's something we've, uh, got to work on and see if we can make that better and, uh, make that feeder system work.
Okay, Guy. Do you support continuing the current retirement benefits, including the early retirement package for employees in the new school district?
Yes. I think we will, we'll just stay what the policy is Alpine is and see what, what we can do to make it better. Or, uh, you know, hey, I, in the years I was, uh, served previously on the board, we were faced with some hard decisions because some of the benefits we had, we couldn't afford anymore. So we had to start cutting things back. But I think we, we've got some great benefits there and maybe we can improve on some of them. And I think that's, uh, it'll, it'll stay the way Alpine has it now with that policy and, and the new board will decide how we're going to tweak that. And, uh, it's definitely, we're not going to do less. It's probably talking about doing more if we have the money to do that.
If we don't continue at least to keep it what it is now, we will lose all our good teachers. So that, that, that would be just, it would be tragic for us. We have a lot of teachers with a lot of experience. They're building up to that. So I think, I mean, building on it would be amazing. But yeah, we've got to at least keep that the same or we're going to lose because other districts do offer that. We have a great package right now. I think, um, we would be amiss if we do not continue that. amiss if we do not continue that.
Okay, Lori. How would you reduce teacher burnout and/or staff, low staff morale?
Okay, I've been reading a lot about this. I read this great article that says, teachers, it's not teacher burnout, it's teacher demoralization is what's happening. I think we need to take a really serious look at how we support our teachers, how we back up our teachers. We need our principals to, and our district to stand behind our teachers. Um, our teachers, just like we don't, we, we try not, you know, we talked about not micromanaging our, our district leadership. We need to, we need to support those teachers. Um, I read another article that just said, what is going on with those other twenty-eight kids when those teachers are having to deal with that one student over and over and over again? We need to come up with some solid solutions on how we're going, how we can deal with these students that are struggling in the classroom.
You know, we just got to, uh, uh, do the things that will make our teachers want to stay in the teaching business and, uh, it just, and, uh, there's a lot of ways to do that and do better and, uh, but a lot of that takes money and, and really, uh, a big thing is, uh, is, uh, class size reduction. And I think that's something that the board will look at in the going forward here when we get our feet on the ground and, and see if we can get more help in the classrooms and get the students down and so we can keep our good teachers because they are the backbone of our education for our kids.
Okay, Guy. Should the new, should the new district commit to keeping dual language immersion programs in all of their existing schools? And if so, how would you support that commitment?
Well, that's something I don't, I'd have to, uh, learn more, but I think it's just something that, you know, I, I need to spend more time and, and understand that and see how we can keep those programs in, in the schools and, uh, that's something we face, uh, right out of the, the box. And I know Alpine was looking at, uh, doing some different changes and, uh, eliminating things, but, uh, and I understand that, so that's, uh, so we'll have to do that and, and programs are a big thing, especially the special programs we have. And we need to, uh, make sure we keep those intact and improve them where we can.
This is a really hot topic. A lot of people have asked me about this. A lot of people have reached out. I think it just is all going to depend on what programs can we financially support? Um, some programs we have to. It's the law. We have to, um, we have to keep our special education programs. We have to, support those students with disabilities until they're twenty-one. Dual immersion, it's something that I, I don't know a lot about. I, I've talked to a lot of people since, since I did this, but I, I, I feel the passion from those parents, but really I think it's going to end up being a, a bottom line decision and it's going to be something that the board's going to have to really talk about.
Okay, Lori. What technology policies should the new district adopt? And how should research on screen time and student distraction shape those policies?
I love the new policy this year. No school, no cell phones in the classrooms. It's made a huge difference. I don't know what's going to continue. I believe that our Chromebook thing right now is a grant that we have the, the ability to have Chromebooks with, for every student. I, um, I don't know if that's going to continue. I, I don't know how that's going to work. I think every policy we do though, create, we do need to look at that. It's, it is, it's been detrimental to our kids to have them all the time and, um, I love when I can walk into a classroom and teachers are using many different kinds of instruction, not just the Chromebooks, um, day after day after day. But, um, I think that we should continue to keep those cell phones put away as much as we possibly can during school and monitor the rest, keep an eye on that with our kids.
Yeah, that was the greatest thing we've done this year is to get the, uh, cell phones out of the classrooms because it's just, um, not a good, it's not a good learning experience. And, uh, hey, we can use technology wisely and, uh, but you know, there's, uh, we can't rely on that all the time and we need to just make sure we're, um, we're doing what we need to do to keep the kids engaged and, uh, not distracted. So let's keep the cell phones out of the classrooms.
Okay, Guy. Reports in Utah show a rise in student aggression towards kindergarten teachers. How would you support educators facing these challenges? And what strategies would you implement to improve student behavior at the early grade levels?
What was that?
Yes.
Is it on boundaries?
No.
Okay.
Reports in Utah show a rise in student aggression towards kindergarten teachers. How would you support educators facing these challenges? And what strategies would you implement to improve student behavior at the early grade levels?
You know, that's, uh, uh, you know, I'm sure we're going to see that come down from the state school board and, and it's, it's, you know, I think we can do all we can as a, as a board to, uh, put some policies into place there and just, uh, follow that and make sure that doesn't become a problem with, uh, our, uh, children there, so.
That's, I think kindergarten is the most important place to address those issues. I don't, I don't know how we can help fix that right now. The first thing that came to my mind was, um, some sort of preschool. I know, I, I like to say, oh, let's do mandatory preschool and then that just adds coaching programs, but, um, I think it's imperative that we take care of those behaviors in the elementary school um, before they, they move on. And I, I've seen that in the junior high. The kids seem to be a little bit more immature each year. And I don't know if, really honestly, I just don't know how to fix that, but hopefully someone else does on the board.
Okay, Lori. In your view, what is one of the greatest struggles, struggles happening in classrooms and how should the school board work with teachers and faculty to resolve it?
Struggles in the classroom?
Yes. Do you want me to read it again?
Sure.
In your view, what is one of the greatest struggles happening in classrooms? And how should the school board work with teachers and faculty to resolve it?
From what I've witnessed, you, our, the class sizes are, are, they're not huge, but they're big, but when you have, you've got two students with disabilities that need accommodations and you've got two students that don't speak any English and you've got other students that have health problems and then you've, you've got your behavior problems. It just, it's a lot for teachers. It's a lot. And I feel like, um, from talking to them, they feel like they're being a referee. They're just trying to keep things enough that they can present the material that they want to present. And, and that's, it's a lot right now. It, it, there's just a lot of things being asked at the same time when these teachers, they care about these kids. They want to teach them all. They want to, they want them all to succeed. And it's, it's pretty disheartening when you're trying to address all these issues at the same time and teach your subject matter.
You know, I hope that our, uh, administrators, uh, from the, the schools to the, uh, district level there's, see where their problems are and bring different solutions and, and, uh, things to the board. That's what we're, it's, it's not for us to be in the classrooms and figure things out. It's what the administrators want to do and what they bring to us. And, uh, we approve for it and, uh, let it go forward and, and hopefully, uh, make it work.
Okay, Guy. What will you do to ensure students without bus service have a safer route to school?
Students without bus service?
Have a safer route to school.
I'm, I'm amazed that we even need buses as many cars that come to the school every day, but anyway, but, uh, we do and we have to uh, have those areas. It's, it's totally changed from when I went to school and, and, uh, but, uh, you know, it's, and, you know, school, uh, that's all state funded, the bus routes. And so we do what we can do and if we do any additional, then that comes out of our operating capital. And, uh, we have to spend money on that we don't get reimbursed for, so, uh, and that's a big, big issue. And especially we take a hard look at the, uh, safety routes and, uh, that, uh, you know, it's, uh, busing's a big expense and without the state's help, it's, uh, it can, uh, burn up a lot of our resources to bus those kids.
I think those kids that live within walking distance, um, I think it's, it's great to, from the school end of it, to teach them how to be safe to get to school and how to walk with friends and I know parents help with that a lot, but I think that encouraging that safety and making it fun, I, um, I love the, to watch the PE teachers on social media when they pick up all the kids on their bikes and stuff and I just think it, it, that, that's something that we, we can ensure for our kids and make sure that we have crossing guards where they are necessary, like absolutely, we, we need to help those kids get there safe.
Okay, Lori. The Alpine Board of Education currently livestreams its meetings on YouTube. Would you support continuing this practice in the new school district? Or are there other methods you would recommend for keeping the community informed?
I think that's a great way for us to do that. You can go back and, and watch all of them from the past. I've done that a lot. Um, I have another commitment on the night that the board meetings are held for Alpine and I think that is, it's dependable. We know it's there, you know, it's going to be there. I think that it just, we need to make sure that we continue to let parents and, and teachers know that it's there and that they can watch that, but I think it's a, it's been a great resource.
You know, that's just the norm now. That's it and it's, that's not going to go away and I don't think there's a better process. So people who don't have the opportunity to be to a meeting to really see what's going on and, and, uh, it's all about transparency and some people say, well, you, you're riding that. I'm just, well, why didn't you come to the board meeting? Why didn't you watch the YouTube channel? And watch it twice. Did you miss something there? So I, I don't even, that's not even, uh, to me a, a question that we'll continue to do that and it's successful. That's what we, that's what all the cities do and what all the, uh, school boards do, so anyway, that's, and that makes a, uh, a, a record that you can go back months later and, and to see where somebody stood on something or what comments were made.
All right, Guy. What role should collaboration with the new, with the other new school districts play in maintaining access to unique resources like the print shop Clear Creek and the space center compared to funding and managing them within the new district?
Well, that's, that's probably one of the biggest challenges we face because we don't know whose, it all depends on how those other boards work out and how they work together. But we need to collaborate with each other and maybe make some efficiencies because, I mean, currently we don't have a bus garage. We may have to get one that may, we have the shared services and stuff. We have a warehouse and would, uh, love to be the central warehouse for the other two districts, I guess, but, but the board will have to decide that and it'll be some, uh, great discussions with the three new superintendents and business managers along with the boards on how we can come to a consensus and make it, uh, more equitable and, uh, cost-saving of doing things and, and they may not want to play with us. So if they don't, we'll do our own thing, so. Uh, that's, that's my feelings on that, that's, uh, we've got a lot of work to do in that area.
I agree with that. I think, um, where we can and where it is, where they have the capacity to help all three districts, at least at the beginning, it, it, it would be, I mean, we've, we've built up some amazing programs and I think it's, it's not something, Clear Creek, I don't think you can split three ways. It's like splitting a baby, right? So I think it, it's going to be something that we're going to want to, but again, we can only go as far as we know that we can go and hopefully those other districts will be, um, amiable to that discussion with us.
All right, Lori. School board members serve multiple groups, students, parents, teachers, and taxpayers. How should these groups be prioritized when their interests conflict?
Will you tell, tell me the four groups again?
Students, parents, teachers, and taxpayers.
I'm just going to say it, I'm going to say it like I think it, right? Students are our number one priority. And I think teachers are our second priority because if you don't have your teachers behind you, then you're going to lose your students. So I would say it's the students, your teachers, your parents, who are some of your taxpayers, and then your taxpayers. I don't know if that's right, but that's me.
I like that.
That's me.
You know, I, I've been given this a lot of thought and, you know, it was always about, previously we said, it's for what they, for the kids. Are we doing what's right for the kids? But what we forget about sometimes is, uh, we put the parents down a little further and it's really, because the parents are really the ones that are responsible for their education of their kids. And, and sometimes we don't give the parents enough input and, and listen to them enough and, and put them, uh, you know, and that's more, we all got to work, all of work together to, to make it successful. But I think we, we need to emphasize the parents because they're the ones that get frustrated and, and, uh, and really, they're the ones in charge of their kids. We just have them for a few hours each day, but it's the parents and we need to, to, uh, listen to them and, and see what we can do better where we can.
Okay, Guy. How should the new school board communicate important district information to ensure transparency and build trust with the community?
Well, I think it just is, we'll just take Alpine's model and be transparent and, uh, put it on the webpage and the, uh, the district site and, and hopefully, uh, even get more information from each of the schools that comes out from, and what's going on in the district and where we're going and, and, uh, I, I, we'll just follow through with what they're doing. I, I don't know how we could do it any better. And maybe there's some places And maybe there's some places we could improve and, uh, but we'll have to take a look at that and, and see what the administration thinks is working and what's not.
Can you read the question for me?
How should the new school board communicate important district information to ensure transparency and build trust with the community?
Yeah, I agree. You, you put it on the, the school websites, you put it on the district website. We've found that emails are not effective anymore. Um, they are for some people, but not for a lot. But I just think making sure that everything's out there. We've, you, you know, the board meetings, a lot of those decisions, you know, all that is, is available to go back and watch. And that, those decisions and the things happening in the schools, I think, um, we just make sure that we are very transparent with what we put out there and invite, when, when appropriate, invite people in to speak with the stakeholders of the school.
Okay, Lori. You and your fellow board members are attending Day on the Hill for school board members, which will be January thirtieth. What do you think will be the most effective thing to do to advocate for the new school district?
Talk to people. Meet people, talk to people. Just that communication going back and forth and, and working with people that, um, make decisions for us and making them know how we feel about things, but working together to, towards those goals.
You know, I couldn't say it any better. So I think I'll agree with, I'll agree there on that. And, uh, we just, we just need to listen and, um, find the best things to do.
Okay. Guy, what excites you most about the creation of the new school district? And what opportunities do you see that could benefit students?
What was that again?
What excites you most about the creation of a new school district? And what opportunities do you see that could benefit students?
You know, I think we can, uh, it's, it was really a sad day when Alpine, Alpine's been such a good district, excellent district. But we just got too big and it really should have just, we just should have split off the West, but that's not what the legislature wanted to do to us. And we had no vote on it. We had no choice. So here we are on a three-way split and, and, but I think it's an opportunity for us. I mean, we've got, uh, three great, four great communities that can work together with great schools and a great backbone. And I think, you know, it's just, it's, I, I'm excited about what this new district can do and how we can, uh, make public education in, uh, the new district just, uh, a short piece of things that we can do right and take care of our, uh, our children, our teachers, and our parents and all the, everybody else that's involved there.
Um, I'm really excited just because anytime you start something new, it's exciting. And I think it's something that we can get the kids behind. I mean, what an exciting new historical thing. Like I, Alpine's been around for so long and this is going to be something new that belongs to these kids at this time and our communities. And I think it's something that, um, can be a really exciting thing. And I think we're going to be able to, um, tailor our kids' education more. Like instead of feeling like they're such these little fish in this huge pond, um, I'm hoping that they'll feel more a part of this and that they have been a part of it and this creation and, um, helping meet their individual needs.
All right, it's time to close. Guy, you get to be first and convince everyone to vote for you.
I thought she got to be first at the first session.
She, she was first for introductions.
You know, we, uh, we've got a great challenge of, uh, ahead of us and whoever the, uh, the voters, uh, decide to sit in District One, I think we're going to be in good shape. Okay? I have all faith in the world of Lori and, and, uh, yeah, I'll just have to add, you know, I really feel old when she used to be our babysitter. Okay, so anyway, and she's, and she's retired. But she's still a whole lot younger than Paula and I. So anyway, so good to, but, you know, I've, I've had the unique experience the last several months where we were mandated by the legislature of the cities to, uh, uh, form an interlocal that we did want to do. And, uh, and, and for all of you, we just put out this new update and it is, uh, surprising, uh, that we have, uh, and I have some out on my table there and I ask you to pick them up. It's supposed to be out on our webpage and it's not yet, but it, uh, will tell you where we're going to, it's called "The Update on the Future of the Tempanoga School District." And it has some shiny spots in it there and, and it's not all gloom and doom that we're facing several months ago. And it's been a great opportunity to serve on that along with, uh, one of my city council members, Eric Jensen, and our city administrator and our, uh, general counsel, Tina Peterson, uh, were the ones from Pleasant Grove that met on that interlocal. And we would usually meet a couple of times a month. But, uh, you know, I just, I'm excited about this new school district. And I'm going to, if I'm elected, I'm going to spend three years getting it headed in the right direction and do all I can do to make it successful and the best district in the entire state.
I won't sing. I, like I said, I have, I have grown and learned so much the last four months. I've probably cried more the last four months than I have in the last forty years. But, um, I am excited for this change and I'm excited for the future of our new district. And I, I've loved Alpine. I've been a part of Alpine for most of my life. But I am more excited for this, this new, um, opportunity. And I, I'm so young.
You are. You are young. You're a kid.
I can learn. And I love that. I love that. I love to learn. I love to do new things. Um, and I hope I never stop. So, um, if you feel so inclined, I would love if you would vote for me for school board. And I'm glad that this is over.
Me too.
All right, let's give a huge thank you to the candidates. I also think we need to give a big thank you to Robert and Jacob, are you here? And Madeline for running in the primary. They did a great job. Give luck to you, the voters, in deciding who to vote for because you have two amazing candidates and I'm really jealous for you. Um, remember your ballots need to be turned in by November fourth at eight PM. And the closest ballot box is at the Pleasant Grove City Office and will be open starting October tenth next week. And the Pleasant Grove Public Safety Building will also be a voting center on Election Day from seven AM to eight PM. And if we didn't get to your questions, because we did, um, we did ask all of the questions that were submitted, be sure to stop by the candidates booth and everyone, travel home safely.